Whereas during her tenure, has served as board clerk from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand twelve, and performed this function in the most able and caring fashion. And? Whereas she also served for the biggest victim of this, was the passing of the campaign provided on the first side to all of these supporting courts now, and now is the one that is standing in support of this. Whereas, she served the administrative leadership to the county cabinet, and through her work showed a commitment to the possibilities of every administrator. And? Whereas, she served as an avid community supporter of the McDonald's Corporation. And?
Whereas, her fellow district office staff members, boards of education members, and school staff will miss her commitment to her responsibilities, her devotion to District sixty-seven, District one fifteen, to school communities.
Therefore, be it resolved that the Boards of Education of Lake Forest Elementary School District sixty-seven and Lake Forest High School District one fifteen do express for themselves, as well as the parents, the students, the staff, and the citizens of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Pam Burke for all she has done to advance the quality education in the city of Lake Forest and Village of Lake Bluff.
Adopted this tenth day of April, two thousand twelve. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Board members, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board members, we passed a resolution, and I didn't ask if you had any questions or comments. Are there questions or comments from my board members?
I think one thing that was omitted from the resolution was the fact that Pam is both observant and thoughtful. She was always quick to notice when someone had cute shoes and compliment them on it. Another thing we'll miss about you, Pam.
Thank you, Mrs. Snoblan. Anyone else? Mrs. Wald?
Are there any comments from the public?
All right. Leslie Fisher, twelve seventy-five Cascade Court. I would like to say that Pam, although my term as a board member has been short, we had experience working together when I was president of APT at Everett, and when I was a volunteer for Spirit. And I think all of the things, the accolades that you gave her recently, Sharon and Julia, are so true. Your talents are endless, but to have all those talents and to be able to do it with a smile, and for people to walk in this building, as we do, back and forth, maybe a little tired, maybe a little frazzled, and you make everything okay. Thank you for doing that.
Is there anyone else?
John Julian, one ninety, Adderich Road, Lake Forest. Pam, as a new Board sixty-seven board member several years ago, you showed me the ropes, and I greatly appreciate it. I didn't know what to do, where to stand, what to read, and you helped me tremendously, and I greatly appreciate that. In my service on the board, I've been very proud of my attendance record, but I've got to tell you, it wouldn't be half that good if it wasn't for you calling me up every morning, telling me where to be at what time. So I thank you very much for that. You'll be sorely missed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Julian. Is there anyone else?
Bill Anderson, ten oh one McCormick Drive. Like a couple other people on the District sixty-seven board, I was new this year, and just learning the ropes and everything was a lot easier because of Pam. I think her, the things I'll remember about her, her calm demeanor, her professionalism, and just her overall personality, and I think, for me at least, she's been an island of, I think, stability during what's been a turbulent year sometimes. So thank you very much, and we'll miss you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I just have to add one comment. We've had a very busy year, and I was sending Pam a lot of emails in which I would say, Pam, we should, send emails reminding this, Pam, we should get this out. And then I finally sent another email, and I said, oh Pam, by the way, we equals you. And that's just the way Pam always was. She always has been. She always just does whatever is asked and never, ever says, I can't do that. I'm just overloaded. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at the moment?
There is. Hold on. Jay?
And Pam, I especially thank you for taking care of Harry, because that is by far the hardest job that you have, and it's the one that you probably do the best.
All right. So with Harry retiring at virtually the same time, Pam, I certainly hope he'll be traveling with you. Vetoed by Mr. Burke.
Pam has to concentrate on the Cubs and getting them, getting them the pennants. So she is going to be a busy woman, but Pam, thank you for everything. Did you want to say anything?
Well, after all of that, I just wanted to say.
Name an address, please.
It's been my privilege to serve Dr. Griffith and the Boards of Education, the administrative staff, and the Lake Forest community. I've truly enjoyed working for both District sixty-seven and one fifteen, and I will always treasure the friendships I have made over the years. I'll miss each and every one of you. A special thank you to Dr. Griffith for allowing me to be a part of his team. Thank you for a wonderful sixteen years.
Thank you, Pam. She's all yours, John.
John, you get her back now. And thank you too, John. Thank you a lot for sharing Pam with us.
Earlier tonight, somebody cut their finger, and the only person in the building that knew how to find a Band-Aid was Pam, so I'm really not sure what's going to happen to this place next week. Good night. Good luck.
Bye, John. Pam, see you here at seven thirty tomorrow morning.
And that concludes the president's report. Moving on, we have the superintendent's report.
Well, well, Julia and sixty-seven board members, thank you for coming tonight. Thank you so much for that. That was very special. Madam President, members of the board, and members of the audience, thank you for being here tonight. We have a short, a short display of information, but I also would like to, I'm not, I'm not sure if this has been done, but I'd like to ask Mr. Mike Simic to stand up. I think maybe our community would like to just see you, if we could get you on camera just for a second, we'd like to introduce you just for a moment. So thank you for being here, Mike, who is superintendent of schools from Michigan, and he's been in our district this week, getting to meet everybody, and it's been terrific to get to know Mike also. So there'll be lots of congratulations and welcomes to you later on, too. So thank you for being here tonight. Board members, let's start with our school report from Jay Hoffman at Lake Forest High School. There are a lot of good things going on, and we just have a few highlights that we'd like to share with you.
Yes, I would like to extend our, our, to discuss in the week or last of our senior head stuff, to come to the show individually, and myself will have a little report later. To, to talk about the Community Wellness Task Force and some other things that are going on. But with all that withstanding, school, we are in the fourth quarter. We have a lot going on right now. In, in the current state of the school, we're signing up for PSAE, Prairie State, and ACT tests. That's happening later in April. We're getting, ramping up for our AP exams that are the second and third week in May. Prom is in full drama swing. We're working on graduation and seniors' last days, and it seems like it's, it's running around the corner and going to happen awful fast. What happens in our classrooms every day is, is really magical, and it continues to be that way. A lot of great things. Dr. Griffith will report out on some of the trips that were taken over our spring break. Fall sport, or excuse me, spring sports are in full bloom, and with the weather that we've had, we've, we've had quite a good experience so far, and we're looking forward to, to those year-end events and, and absolutely great weather on June third.
Thank you, June second. Thank you, Jay. Board members, just a couple of highlights also to add. We did have our spring trip to China. We have a sister school in Shanghai where we do an exchange of about a dozen students from China arriving in the Lake Forest community in the fall, and that was very successful. They're here for two weeks. And then in the spring, we send a dozen students ourselves to China. We had sponsors with. Our two teachers who went with did a great job. The students had a wonderful experience. They do, they do go on tours. There is sponsorship by the Chinese, hosting the families, excuse me, our students. It's a boarding school, it's a public boarding school, similar in size to Lake Forest High School. I bet, I have, actually was there to sign contracts and meet, met teachers and educators myself several years ago. They had a fantastic experience. The things I heard from students and faculty alike made, we know that this is an amazing thing. One of our first students to ever go on this trip is now studying abroad in China through Pepperdine University, and in fact, I think our students had a chance to meet her while she was there. So it was quite inspirational. And then secondly, our choir this year was there, on the rotation, they went abroad to Italy, and they sang at the Vatican, and several other venues, visiting a half dozen cities. And I don't know, Jay, if you want to add anything, but I understand they had a spectacular experience also.
It was a spectacular experience. There, there were a lot of great concerts that were, that they sang at and perform, performances were amazing. There, there was a slight gondola accident and a Trevi Fountain mishap, but other than that, they came back, all came back safe. It was eighty-strong with Tim Haskett and, and our choir. And they really had a great time. Next year, the band and orchestra will, will go, and they're planning a trip through France and Germany.
Interestingly enough, the girls' hockey team took second in state last year. They were the defending state champions. Down at the United Center on March twenty-third, and the interesting part of it was, the goalie for the Lake Forest High School team was, is a freshman, and the, and the score was one to nothing against Nutria. Nutria scored the only goal of the game, and while we had a freshman goalie, the goal was scored on the Nutria team also by a freshman. So that was pretty interesting and very closely contested. And I talked to one of the dads who was down there, and just said that, you know, the, the girls get a tour of the facility. The Worts family really does a nice job of making the, the high school families feel very welcome. Obviously, it's a large venue, and it's quite exciting for the girls to, and to play in the state championship team, game two years in a row. So also would like to, board members, say something about last month. We had a group of students here to talk about, enjoy the journey, and I, I don't know if we have a, Anne has that. You're going to do that a little bit later? Okay. So let me, board members, if, we'll just do that as part of the task force report. Okay. So I'll hold on that. All right. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Griffith. Moving on, we have public participation. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment on a topic that's not on the agenda tonight, they can do so now. Seeing no one, we'll move on to our report for the evening, and that is our Community Wellness Task Force report. Dr. Griffith?
Yes, board members, we, we thought that in light of the tragedies that we've had recently in our community affecting our high school student population, and we're so sorrowful for the Scott family recently experiencing this, and also our other families, that we thought that we should give you, you know, very heartfelt, and it's with sorrow that we report the importance of redoubling our, our efforts to work hard at staying connected with our students. But fact of the matter is, it takes a village, and it's, it's way more than just our school. So Dr. Cooley is going, here to give you a quick summary, and Jay is going to pitch in, I think, on some of the school activities with respect to working on mental wellness issues in our community from a broader perspective. So Dr. Cooley, thank you.
You're welcome, and good evening, board members. As Dr. Griffith said, we all approach this topic with some amount of sorrow and mourning for the families and the friends, and even our whole community that have been affected by this. But despite that, we need to look at it as an issue, so we carry on. So I think many of you know that on March fifth, Dr. Griffith organized a community task force, kind of impromptu at the moment, but I think it's, it's going to stick as an organization, at least for medium to, you know, short to medium term. Our schools were represented, Lake Bluff schools were represented. We had a number of parent leaders. I believe Nikki were present that day. We had, City of Lake Forest was represented by Deputy Chief Burmeister. Village of Lake Bluff was there. Lead representative, President Croia also. And at that time, we kind of looked at the fact that, you know, we had all these organizations present, and so we actually have a number of resources that really are devoted to the mental health of our youth, and yet we, we run into tragedies like this. So our thought was, rather than to look for an immediate solution, that a more careful look at it, systemic look at it, would be probably the correct approach. I think the group that were there that day, I think there were probably about twenty of us, were in entire agreement, and so a subgroup was formed that day to look at, find an entity, a professional or an organization that could help the community do an assessment of all its resources, and then look for the strengths and the weaknesses, any kind of gaps, any kind of maybe lapses in, in communication or links between them, or whatever it might be, we don't know. So the subgroup, which is made up of Todd Nahigan for Croia, Kathy O'Hara, who represents not only the Village of Lake Bluff, but obviously is quite involved at the high school, Jim Thiel, as you know, Linda Gansher, the high school APT president, Elizabeth Nemecus, the sixty-seven APT representative, and then Kate Amaral, who is the, from the PTO in District sixty-five. And we, as a subgroup, contacted about thirteen different, either professional experts in mental health and/or organizations that could help us do this kind of an assessment, called each one, brought back our information. We've met three times, and now on Monday, April sixteenth, at one o'clock, this larger group is coming back together, and our smaller subcommittee is going to offer some recommendations on a possible expert that could assist the task force, as well as an entity that could potentially, you know, do this type of assessment. So we'll bring that to this larger group, and then we'll make an announcement after that if it should go forward. But I can assure you that what we looked at is really reputable organizations, and did reference checks and all of those kinds of things. So, you know, we'll be talking about that. We'll be talking about whether or not there is a larger group to come together, who would make up even a larger group than our, our committee. So we'll probably, you know, come to all of you to, to think of who you think should contribute, and certainly our students and more parents, as well as other officials, will take part in that. So there'll be more to come on that. We'll want to watch this, how it rolls out over time. We'll want to be sensitive to the fact that we don't want to re, re-bring these things up in such a way that's not sensitive to the situations, but yet is helpful to the community. So we'll be doing all this in a really measured, careful way.
Well, when we, when Fareed was killed, we kind of put in some things into action, and then when Will was killed, we ramped it up quite a bit. We figured the best way to get to our kids was through our faculty. So right quickly after that, we brought in Dr. John Yoakum, who did, during Institute Day, speak to our faculty for about two hours about mental health, adolescent suicide, many other different topics that are, that our, our kids are facing. He spoke in a very generic and general way, very educational. It was four teachers, two teachers, and they really took a great deal from it. We subsequently brought him back, in fact, today, and he did three luncheon learns in which a hundred of our faculty participated. It's an unbelievable high number, almost three-quarters of them, and did what's called gatekeeper training for our faculty, and that's to really get them up to speed on the signs and symptoms, what to look for, what the next steps are, and that was hugely successful. He's coming back next week to do an hour and a half presentation that's a little more in-depth, a little more clinical, for all our support staff that were on the front line through these tragedies. All our social workers, our counselors, our psychologists, all the people kind of in the front lines are going to get a more in-depth training next week. That's the best way to get to our kids. We've done a lot over the past several years with maintaining curriculum that involves mental health issues, depression, suicide, things like that. We've had a long-term relationship with Erica's Lighthouse. They've come and spoke during our lunches to our kids for many years now. But this year, we ramped it up quite a bit. We sent fifteen kids to Erica's Lighthouse, and they were trained as panelists. So when Erica's Lighthouse is coming later in this month, they will come with our kids as the panelists, not the kids that they bring from other schools. Our kids can then help in other areas through Erica's Lighthouse. So fifteen of our junior and senior leaders were trained as panelists in February, and are now ready to, during National Depression Week, it is the last week in April, first week in May, roll out some programming for our students, one of which is Erica's Lighthouse will come, and our kids will be the panelists. A second thing that we're doing is we're bringing a drama troupe in, and the, the purpose of the drama troupe is to act out little vignettes about depression, mental illness, and then come up with a solution and discuss it with our kids. So that, that's, that's been another thing added to that week. And the last thing we're doing is bringing in, or the last thing for the week, anyway, is bringing in an author, Ned, Ned Vazini, who has been here before, but he has, has written a couple of books on, on those same topics, and our kids really liked when he came in two years ago, so we're bringing him back for that week. Plus, beyond that, we're also looking pretty, pretty carefully at the curriculum that we did have in place that was available for all of our kids, and looking at, at possible alternatives to, to maybe improve that. I know that Jen and, and her health department has been in contact with some of the same people that Julie's talking about, to, to bring in that new curriculum for, for our kids, a kind of different way to learn. So we think that, that partnering with the community, having the, our parents come in and hear speakers both driven by the high school and driven by our faith-based community was a wonderful thing, and kind of all together, we, we think we're, we're making some strides. Some, some pretty significant, and we're pretty proud of what we've done.
So, board members, just to finish this report, and then please, we'll go to questions. I'll, I'll finish with this. Eight years ago, Lake Forest High School had no counselors. We had no librarians. We had no psychologists on staff. We had limited health service support. And over the past eight years, the Board of Education has been intimately involved in supporting the addition of four social workers, one full-time school psychologist, additional health education staff, new coursework for our high school students, new curriculum, a social-emotional wellness initiative that is comprehensive over the past, built over the past five years. And some of the programming is literally inspiring, because it's led by our students. It's an investment in our students that we can be proud of. Recent events have caused us to reflect on the importance of doubling our efforts. Over the past weeks, we've had an outpouring of support and suggestions from members of our community. Our community task force is considering every single suggestion. This team, as mentioned by Dr. Cooley, including representatives from Lake Forest High School, District 67, District 65, various parent leaders, Croya, Lead, Lake Forest Hospital, and our local police department, is exploring local, national, and national resources to further support our students, faculty, and parent community now and into the future. We will continue to keep everyone apprised as best we can of their progress. Additionally, we've had repeated requests to establish a fund specifically devoted to emotional wellness initiatives in our school. We have received numerous phone calls. "I would like to donate. How can I help?" So, with the task force and our own crisis team identifying and developing new resources and programs, we do believe a fund of this nature would be meaningful. Therefore, we would like to announce a fund reflecting the name of a student-created group and the theme of this year's 2012 Whole School Wellness Walk titled "Enjoy the Journey", which will occur on May 21st, 2012. The purpose, to further the vision of "Enjoy the Journey", donated funds will broaden and strengthen our student support, faculty, parent, and student education and wellness program efforts in the immediate future, and we think perhaps in two years to come. Anyone interested in participating, donations would be made out to Lake Forest High School to "Enjoy the Journey". I would recommend it be put, made to "Enjoy the Journey", and of course, that would be at Lake Forest High School. Board members, questions? We have a lot of school activity going on. Dr. Cooley was here to talk about the community effort, which I think is the most promising thing about all of this coming up, making this really a whole-community partnership.
Board members, questions or comments?
Harry, could you just clarify about the donations? Are those to be used to help fund the consultant that will be brought in, or are they to be used specifically in the school for our own emotional wellness efforts?
Yes. We've had a lot of discussion about this. This would, we would establish a new activity account. And Jennifer, why don't you talk about the types of things that we think would be applicable?
We thought that, at the most fundamental level, it could support education-based activities for faculty, like Dr. Yocum coming in. He has been very gracious in his support thus far, but we do want to recognize the sustained support he's already given us. So, at that most fundamental level, that, some of the activities that we have coming up during the week of April and May. But we also think that, long-term, and as part of our larger vision of supporting students' emotional wellness, that it would be appropriate to have this fund also support some more proactive measures in addition to what we have. Emotional wellness actually has largely been in kind of a grassroots and expensive measure. But as we move forward, and as we look to opportunities for our students to have leadership and develop some of the skills that we have started to see within them, there would be opportunities within this fund to develop that further. Is that helpful?
Yes. Basically, I was wondering, is this separate from the community-wide effort? And it really is. This is for-
Yes. It is distinct. This is school-based, based with a focus on school activities, whether those be for faculty or students.
Right.
Right. We need to be a part of the community task force, but it is, the task force itself is much larger than the school. It's the whole community. And inside that is a redoubling of our own efforts. So, speakers, ways to connect with our students, improving the connections, building curriculum into every single lesson in our school that are designed to promote emotional wellness, connectedness, respect for each other in the school. We've got a really good organizational system now, but this fund can help us with outside experts in a lot of prevention activities, the very kind of thing that Jay described for today, that happened today at lunch.
Maybe this is doubling up a little bit on the last question, but I had a chance last week to attend that session over at Gordon, and the effort, and I'll attribute it to the ministers, although I think a lot of people were involved in it, was just terrific in terms of educating a captivating audience of 500 people, thereabouts, standing room only. How do we coordinate our efforts going forward with that broader group? So that, you know, we're all trying to get, I think, at the same goal, but how do we get there in a coordinated and effective fashion?
You know, that's a great question, and I think that that, the answer to that question will come out of the task force. And I want to, I think that, again, that's exactly what we hope could come out, because we don't want to hamper the efforts of the faith-based groups, but we want to be in concert with them. So, perhaps, you know, we might come up with a strategy that will say, "In the event of certain kinds of crises, you know, please churches, always feel free to, you'll have our support whenever you put on a venue like this," or that kind of thing. Lead kind of knows, the organization Lead would know what their role would be. We know that we have to concentrate our efforts on our students, and we have to have that focus and be free to just really dive in on that. And so, the parent pieces is a wonderful thing for other groups in the community to help us with, and they have helped us with that. But I think tightening the coordination of that, so they're not worried, "School, are you behind this?", and those kinds of things, I think could be a big bonus. But I think that will be a natural outgrowth of the task force, potentially.
Yeah. And let me just, this may be, it'll sound a little random, but I think it's, there's a linkage here, a nexus. But I'm very proud of the fact that I was here to recommend to the board the creation of the first student assistance program in the history of Lake Forest High School. And this was a position that we hired full-time to help the high school interact with our community over coordinated programs to help our students in a variety of ways, including with respect to drug and alcohol abuse. Unfortunately, with the staffing issues that we've had reductions, we have reduced our school's social worker population from 4 to 3.2. And we went to, there is a part-time SAP coordinator that's being funded by a grant and Lake Forest Hospital. Board members, it's the kind of thing that, through the task force, it may reemerge as a little bit higher priority in the future for this segment of our population, that the Speak Up Coalition, Board Member Dick Block and Julie Cooley are both on that. So, it's really about how to, how do we start to network the various agencies, organizations, and neighborhoods to be on the spot with preventative and reactive care that might help a family in crisis, or a child in crisis? So, we've gotten pretty good at the school level, but we're very limited. We are 8% to 10% of a student's total time. 90% of the time, a student is in the community. So, it begs for the kind of thing that our Speak Up Coalition is doing across many other fronts or efforts that I, I'm hopeful that this steering committee, Jim, can help guide us through collectively.
Board members, any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much. I know that as community members, we're always shocked and saddened at these sudden events, but as I was reading through the Lake Forest High School website and just going over the emotional wellness initiative at the high school, just because you don't know about something doesn't mean it's not happening. And I will say that Lake Forest High School has been very attentive to the needs of our children and involving our students in these issues. And as Mr. Hoffman said, things got ramped up a bit in the last few months. But I think you've all been doing an excellent job of helping our students along the way. And I would encourage anyone who hasn't read up on the activities of the emotional wellness initiative to go to the website and do that.
Thank you, everyone, for the report. Next, we have our board committee reports, beginning with our board education committee, Nikki Snoblan.
The education committee met last Wednesday, April 4th, and the main topic of discussion was the key objectives for the two board goals that are specifically related to education. The board itself sets a number of goals, and then the staff develops objectives and then strategic actions to achieve those objectives. So, this was the first go-around of the objectives related to the two board goals that have to do with, specifically with, the education committee. So, we were presented with a draft. Jen Knight and Jay Hoffman, and along with Jim Sullivan, went over that with us. Last year, we had eight objectives, and six of them are recommended to be retained with some revisions. Two of them were recommended to be dropped, one because it had been completed, and the other because it was kind of no longer the direction we were going. And then, one new objective was being proposed. So, they went over this at some length with us and explained what the status of those objectives were and why they were making the recommendations that they did. And the committee members all agreed in principle with those recommendations. Now, normally, at this time, the board as a whole would have met to talk about our goals for the coming year. Because of the unusual sequence of events, this winter and spring, we haven't done that yet, and I know Sharon is going to be addressing that later. But, so for right now, we're not going to be doing anything with those objectives. We've agreed in principle, and then they'll be picked up again once the board meets in a workshop to discuss our goals. And then, Dr. Griffith and Mr. Hoffman summarized what was happening in response to the tragic events in the school district and in the community, and we've all pretty much heard the same information. Dr. Cooley reported to us on the Community Wellness Task Forces, as you've just heard. And then, I will be involved in that meeting on April 16th. And our own staff truly is representing the district in this process. I'm just kind of there to show that the board is, in fact, engaged. We're not standing back from this whole process. We do want to stay in the loop. And I've also spoken with members of the District 67 Board, because they do feel that it's very important for them to be able to ask questions that community members may ask about what's happening in regard to this. So, I'm just going to try and help our own board members and perhaps the District 67 Board members stay in the loop. And that was about it. We haven't scheduled another meeting for this year, and I'm not thinking, I'm thinking that we may, in fact, not meet again this school year, in which case, I want to thank the participants in that committee for all the hard work that they've done over the year. And we've got two great community members, Beth Coughlin and Ann Sorenson, both of whom have devoted a lot of time to the committee and tremendous input. So, thank you to everybody, and if I don't see them again before June, we'll meet in the fall. Monty, do you want to add anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Our next report is the Board Operations Committee, Dick Block.
The Operations Committee has not met since our last meeting, although we do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow morning at 7:30 a.m. It is a joint meeting with our Finance Committee, with the agenda item being the Booster Club Diamond Anniversary Campaign. So, I would encourage all who may be interested, public or other board members, to join us if they're interested. Todd, would you like to add anything?
No, thanks.
Thank you, Dick. Next is our Board Finance Committee, Jim Carey.
The Finance Committee has not met since our last meeting.
Thank you, Jim. Moving on, there are no liaison reports this month, but we do have action items. The first is the approval of the IASB Board Policies, first reading. Dr. Griffith?
Yes. Board members, we have tonight, this would be for first reading. Or if you wish, you could bypass first reading, go to second reading, and this would adopt the policy. But this is a policy on titled misconduct of district employee. And this is a product of the investigation conducted by investigator Ron Safer, who recommended this policy be adopted in District 67. And jointly, this was reviewed by Lake Forest High School Board Policy Committee. And this is a policy simply designed to guide the school board and superintendent should they be made aware of that a school district employee is the subject of an investigation, laying out what relevant steps to take that would guide the district in conducting as thorough an investigation as possible. So, this would be upon your approval either tonight through second reading, waiving first reading, or at our next board meeting, after you've had time to further consider this policy. If you would adopt it at that point, this would be, we would contact your policy service, School Board Association, and have this implemented immediately.
Todd Bergner and Monty Edson sit on policy with me. Do either of you have any comments about the policy? We've had two meetings to go over this with our attorney, and had pretty lively discussion with the members of the Policy Committee from District 67. So, there was a good roundtable discussion. Any other board members have questions or comments on this?
My only question really regards the specific wording of the policy. I'm certainly supportive of the concept. I might suggest, I don't know that we need to discuss it here in open forum, but some of the language leaves me questioning some things regarding the board's role and the superintendent's role, that's all. I'd be happy to make some suggestions and-
Well, if we're going to adopt it tonight, maybe this is a good time to ask your questions.
Okay. It starts off by saying, when the board or superintendent becomes aware the school district employee is the subject of an investigation, dot, 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 the board shall consult with, well, there ought to be a concurrent requirement for the superintendent to report that to the board if the board is going to be required to take action. As a, for instance, I notice from that point forward, the superintendent really doesn't have a role. I presume that that's by design. It becomes incumbent on the board to hire this independent investigator, and then for the investigator to report back to the board in executive session. Is that the intent?
Yeah. Let me clarify. It's almost the first policy of the board manual, and that is that the Board of Education conducts its business through the superintendent. So, whenever it says "the board" here, that will direct the superintendent. The intent is to direct the superintendent, on behalf of the board, to proceed in accordance with whatever policy. That kind of language is used across probably 300 policies.
Well, again, I would defer back to the Policy Committee. I'd feel more comfortable if we explicitly required the superintendent to report his knowledge to the board. And frankly, I'd feel more comfortable if we required any district employee upon becoming aware of another employee being the subject of an investigation by law enforcement authorities to report that.
Part of the discussion we went through, though, is when is something a matter of school district business, your employment? You know, this would go all the way, the type of things we're dealing with here could go all the way down to littering or speeding tickets. And we had a lengthy discussion about what is your personal life, and when does your conduct overlap with your employment or with this school district? And as I said, there were probably, what, three, six, eight people involved in the conversation, and this one was written by Mr. Safer. I'm comfortable with it when you walk through it, and we went through the whole conversation. There's two more policies coming forward that we're still working on. But do others have the same concerns about rewording it?
I don't, and I also think that you have to look at the remote possibility that a superintendent could, in fact, be the employee in question. And so, if you said specifically or explicitly-
or explicitly that the superintendent was to carry out these actions, that wouldn't be appropriate in that case. So by saying board or superintendent, or superintendent, and then leaving it to the board to consult with, that seems to me to cover all the, all the possibilities. And as Harry pointed out, when the board is required to do something, sometimes that means assigning the superintendent to carry it out. So to me, not being an attorney, it sounds appropriate if somewhat pointed.
It does read the way other policies in the manual read.
Maybe I didn't explain myself as clearly as I would have liked. My problem is the way it's worded, when the board or superintendent becomes aware, I think it ought, there ought to be a requirement on the superintendent to inform the board, and I don't read this into the policy, that's all.
Well, it's possible that's covered in another policy. Todd or Monti, do you have any comments?
I think it's a good, a good point that he's making, and we ought to, if it's possible it's covered in another policy, we ought to verify that before we vote on it. Do you agree?
I think it's actually somewhat implied by the, by the action required by the board. If the board or the superintendent becomes aware of, the board shall appoint, the board can't appoint or consult with without knowledge, so it's implied in the language that the superintendent would be confering with the board to allow the board to take the actions that it's required to take.
I think that was the intention.
Well, given that we've got two other policies we're going to bring forward which relate to the same issue from the same investigation, why don't we at least clarify the language and try to bring it all forward at the same time? Does that make sense?
All right, that makes sense. Anyone else?
I would second that, that it makes sense bringing them all together at the same time.
And I would note that further to your other comments, Mrs. Golan, if this was written by Mr. Safer, I mean, it consciously is all-inclusive, it just says, you know, when an employee is the subject of an investigation, even, not, you know, doesn't even have to be charged by law enforcement authorities, so it's, you know, I, the way I read it, it's meant to include any criminal investigation, be it littering or, it's pretty inclusive, is my only point. We may want to give that some further thought.
As it was originally written, it was viewed by the committee as being that all-inclusive, and I think the original language actually required the board to appoint an investigator, and we wordsmithed it down to the board consulting with an investigator so that we can actually use good judgment and not incur the expense and the waste of time to have an investigation of a potential littering offense or something of that magnitude.
Look, it's not my intention to wordsmith it to death, and one final comment, I would highly recommend we coordinate with District 67 and have a similar policy, to the extent that all, you know, both boards would...
Right, that's exactly what's happening.
Could agree to that, okay, well, this has been mentioned.
It was, both the Policy Committee of both boards reviewed this, and this is being recommended to the 67 Board, too. The purpose of the First Reading is to get the discussion started so that other changes can be made between the First and the Second Reading. So, so deferring this would be an appropriate way, because input from board members like this is a very healthy way to do a policy like this, or any policy. So I've got two changes, or considerations, to go back to the Policy Committee, superintendent required to inform, and just the consideration, just perhaps even just for discussion on subject of an investigation as opposed to just being, the difference between that and being charged. Is that right? Okay.
All right, we do have a joint policy meeting scheduled for the end of the month, but in the meantime, this is also being looked at by our attorneys, so we can get it to them and back to us before that policy meeting.
Sharon, I think just for everybody to reminder, so the board has a Policy Committee, and the Policy Committee meets a couple of times during the year to review updates to policies that are based on both statutory changes from the legislature in Illinois, court actions, or other federal and state activity that may affect board policy. All policies are reviewed by the Illinois School Board Association. They have a team of lawyers that vet their policies, so they are reviewed by a legal team even before they arrive at the school district. And then I'll contact the chairman of the Policy Committee, and the board members who are appointed will convene, review the policies, have discussion, perhaps make changes, and then they're brought to the board itself as a whole for a First Reading and eventually a Second Reading for final approval and implementation into our policy manual. So just a reminder to everybody as to the process we go through, it's a thoughtful, lengthy one. In this particular case, the three policies under consideration are being jointly developed by both boards.
Yeah, I might just also add, having been a member of that Policy Committee, this is an area where the, you mentioned, Harry, the Illinois Association of School Boards, this is an area where the standard policy did not address the situation, and we're having to develop these policies on our own, just to, it's not like this, the State Board of Education had recommended something, and we, we said, no, we don't think that ought to apply to us, anything of that nature. This is something that's being done out of our own initiative in the wake of what's happened.
Okay, so we're passing on First Reading, is that correct? All right. That's all right with everyone? Okay, then moving on, we have the approval of the Human Resources Report. Dr. Griffith?
I, as Board Members, once again, in the redistribution of duties this, this year, Jennifer Knight is managing at the school, at Lake Forest High School, our personnel reports and many other related activities. Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you. I am happy to report that our staffing for 2012 and 2013 is already a good way toward completed, as you probably saw in a very healthy HR report this month. We have many, most of our hires back to start next year's school year. We have a little bit of hiring in place. We're doing some interviewing right now for some certified positions that we're trying to get the process completed on. And I do want to congratulate five of our teachers that will have tenure as of this meeting. Dan Magler, Lisa Huffman, Heather Vogler, Laura Grigg, and Mike Colash, they're all great assets to the district, and we're proud to announce and congratulate them on their tenure here in the building.
Yeah, and I'd just like to add for our community that of the five, one of them is our, one of the librarians, and two of them are social workers, so these were new positions added into the district just a few years ago.
And they've been a great asset, not only at a professional level, but just at a whole school level. They participate not just with students during the school day, but they each have additional responsibilities that they are, they are 12-hour-a-day teachers to our students. A couple other items that I did want to come back to, I mentioned last month that we had some teachers who are participating in a training called Capturing Kids' Hearts. We had sent five of our faculty members down to a training in Chicago to explore the possibility of this training, and they came back saying that they thought they had a good product, but that they thought the process was excellent, and that is a strong word coming from our faculty. They are not easy cells, and we especially tried to send down teachers that we thought came in with a critical and really intelligent eye at professional development. This training was especially focused on relational skills within the classroom, and not only developing those relational skills within oneself as a, as a teacher, but also within your school, within your students and within your classroom. Again, they thought that the product that they came through was good, but that the process which they experienced as colleagues and as teachers and as people, as individuals who had chosen to go into the educational field was excellent. So we have spoken to our APT, and they are interested in supporting us in going further with this process. So we are in conversation with this group about the possibility of a fall training for more of our faculty members. We have already anticipated sending a couple of other faculty members in summer through the training, but we'd like to build this out. Our teachers felt very strongly that this was something with great value for our faculty, which would immediately impact virtually every student in our building if we have a significant number of teachers go through it this fall, which it looks like is a likely possibility. One last piece, also professional development-related, we have our two last Kessler Teaching Institutes for the 2011-12 school year, both in action right now. The first, as I mentioned, is a book club on teacher evaluation. We have 20 faculty members participating in that. It's co-led by Jim Sullivan and our union president, Linda Rich, so a great duo. And 20 teachers really working through the details of Danielson together and with the support of her book. The other book club that we have going is also apropos for board goals. We have 14 faculty members working with Andrea Wise, another one of our teachers, with a book that is focused on techniques and tools for digitally rich, rich classroom. It's really moving us beyond what are devices and to what are techniques, what are strategies, what are the instructional ways to get the best use out of technology and working with students? So we are already looking towards this summer, and the KTI's for 2012 and 13, but these have been especially strong ones to end the year. So thank you. Oh, and I would also like to put in a request for good weather on May 21st. If Jay gets June 2nd, I would like May 21st for the whole building, so two sunny days.
It's a big job to work on June 2nd.
I'll cross my fingers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve the Human Resources Report?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Scribner?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan? Aye. Motion carries, and congratulations to our newly tenured teachers. Next, we have our consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a board member would like to have removed for further discussion? All right, seeing on the consent agenda consists of the approval of financial report and schedule of checks written, the approval of minutes from a regular meeting of March 13th, 2012, minutes in of executive session, March 13th, 2012, and disposal, oh, and no disposal of audio recordings this month. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Mr. Scribner?
Mrs. Snoblan? Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan? Aye. Motion carries. Foyer requests, we have a big one from Nancy Thorne at 331 East Blodgett, Blodgett, in Lake Bluff, Blodgett? I didn't always say it wrong. And one from Alex Sinello. Are there any items board members would like to see on future agendas? Announcements, Tuesday, April 17th, Student Service Recognition Night. April 24th and 25th, PSAE testing for juniors. The freshmen, sophomore, and seniors have a day of non-attendance. Saturday, June 2nd is graduation at 2:00 p.m. And Tuesday, May 8th, is our next Board of Education meeting at 7:00 p.m. here in the West Campus Boardroom. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1745.61][1745.61]